Hello, regular meeting number 52 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Stenziano, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to invite up Dr. Nicole Ghazi to lead us in prayer. And if everyone could remain standing after the prayer, I'm going to let Councilmember Mitch Brown make a quick comment. So, Dr. Ghazi.
Nicole, please.
Nicole.
Thank you. In the name of God, the most gracious, the most merciful, praise be to the Lord of the universe, who has created us and made us into tribes and nations that we may know one another. Let us be grateful for the opportunity to gather together in unity today with all of the incredible diversity we represent. Some of us in this room will work from within the power of government to bring about positive change. Today, we give thanks to you, oh Lord, for the support these leaders have shown our Muslim community, and we ask you, God, to protect and bless them as they take a stand for justice for all. Some of us here will work for change from outside these chambers, filled with aspirations of what our community can be. Today, we ask you for your continued guidance to make us beacons of hope for all. Lord, please guide us to be the face of compassion as we know this is the better way. Let us be open to each other's ideas, beliefs, and practices, knowing it is our diversity that is our strength. Give us the fortitude to demand not only justice for all, but dignity for all. Give us the strength to recognize that each of us holds value and has something to offer. Like the small bird who tried to douse the flames Abraham was cast into with a drop of water in his beak, we may not be asked by you, oh God, if we put out the fire of hatred, but surely we will be held to account for what it is we did do to help. We ask you for your mercy and protection as we reflect on what each of us is doing to contribute to the greater good. Let us hope and pray that we may all carve out time to reflect on what matters to us most, and then find ways to nurture what speaks to our hearts, that we may all open ourselves to feel the joy and the pain of others as if it was our own, for that is part of being human, and that we may celebrate what we have in common and honor our differences with a profound respect and kindness for all. And may we all aspire to be among those who bring healing and hope to our community. With your grace and blessing, I say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Ghazi. Councilwoman Mitch Brown?
I would like to ask for a few moments of silence and remembrance. Firefighter Lieutenant Stuart Tutter, 25-year veteran of Columbus Division of Fire, passed at 30 as a result of injury sustained during a lightning strike in 2014. The action occurred while he was doing something he loved, raising money for abandoned women in uniform that had been injured in the line of duty. Our thoughts and prayers are with this man.
Thank you. Please have a seat. Clerk Colerole?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Is there a second? Is there a second? Clerk Colerole?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda. They'll be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Resolutions from members of council. Councilmember Elizabeth Brown?
Thank you, President Klein. I don't have any resolutions. I have two brief announcements. The first is just to notify the public that today an RFP went out from the Department of Development about redevelopment of ground near the North Market, and we are holding a public meeting on that process on November 3 at 5:30 at Thompson Recreation Center. Dr. Shoney, is there anything you want to add?
Thank you very much, Council President, Councilmember Brown. We're excited to be moving forward with the process and looking forward to getting public comment from folks as we go forward. That's it.
Great. I really encourage everyone to come. The North Market is a treasure in Columbus. My second announcement, a couple weeks ago, about a month ago, I had invited some guests in from Columbus City Schools, really the whole school board showed up to talk about Issue 57 on the ballot this November. And when they came down and visited, they gave us some great information, and one of the things that I talked about with them was this idea that the smartest economic development investment we can make is in our education, is in our schools. And I want to highlight another important issue that's on the ballot in November. Issue 58 is the Hilliard City Schools levy. The Hilliard City Schools serve a little over 16,000 kids. 7,000 of them are Columbus residents. 7,000 of our youngest residents in this city attend Hilliard City Schools. They are well-served by Superintendent John Marshhausen, and they're well-served by a district that has strong fiscal management. This is their first levy in the last five years, in five years. This is their first one. It's a 4.5 mil levy and contains a $50 million bond issue. I had the opportunity to sit with Superintendent Marshhausen, as well as Director Rhonda Johnson and Assistant Director Matt Smido, both of our Education Department, and my aide Kelsey Ellingson, and heard about the good work that he's doing in Hilliard and the importance of this issue for our, again, 7,000 of our youngest residents in the city of Columbus. So I just wanted to make that announcement and make sure everyone was aware of Issue 58 on the ballot this year. I am in support of it. I do not live in the district, but as a Columbus City Council member, I am cognizant that these are all of our kids. Director Johnson made the very good point that many kids that go to Columbus City Schools might move often. A lot of times, lower-income residents end up moving quite a bit as they grow up, and they don't move to Cincinnati. They oftentimes move enough to go to a new school district and then come back to ours, and it's really important that we strengthen our neighboring school districts around our core city schools as well. So, thank you, President Klein, for allowing me to express my support.
Thank you, Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Councilmember Mitch Brown?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Harden?
Thank you, President Klein. Just one announcement. I will be hosting our second roundtable with the Department of Public Service and Transportation on November 1 at 6:00 PM at the Parsons Library at 1113 Parsons Avenue. We'll be discussing road and sidewalk improvements along Parsons Avenue and talking about the future of transportation in our city, and just encourage anyone, regardless of what side of town you live on, to come and be a part of that discussion. Thank you so much.
Thank you, President Klein. I do have two resolutions this evening. The first resolution is 0246-X-2016, and I would like to ask Mr. Hal Keller to come down to the podium. Again, Resolution 024X-2016, to commemorate the outstanding work of Hal Keller and to recognize him for being the 2016 Voice and Vision recipient. I'd like to go over a few of Mr. Keller's accomplishments. He has been dedicated for over 35 years to making substantial contributions to the lives of some of the most vulnerable people in our community. He is the current president of the Ohio Capital Corporation for Housing. Under his leadership, the Ohio Capital Corporation has raised more than $3.7 billion to help with affordable housing. And, Mr. Keller, we really thank you for your exceptional work. And with that, I would like to move for adoption of this resolution.
Second?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Mr. Keller, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilman Page, Council President Klein, and the rest of the city council. I'm truly honored by this resolution. We've worked in 86 of Ohio's 88 counties and dozens of projects in other states, and wherever I go, I marvel at the city of Columbus about how the city leads efforts, it looks at collective solutions, Community Shelter Board, Affordable Housing Trust Corporation, and we've worked on so many great projects together, the YMCA, the YWCA, Community Housing Network, and Point Dexter. I'm just thrilled, and I would also like to point out that without the colleagues to work for Director Shoney, Rita Perez, and Tracy Swanson, our jobs in the development community would be a lot more difficult, but I'm truly honored, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Are there any additional comments? Thank you. Congratulations. And for my second resolution, I would like to call Mr. Roger Reel and Jack Castle and anyone else who is with the BATS organization to come down. And I have ordinance, I mean, sorry, Resolution 0248-X-2016, to commemorate the hard work of the Burr Liner Action Team for Sports organization and to congratulate them on celebrating 30 years. And just to highlight a few of the things that the BATS organization has been done, they were organized in October 16, 1986, and have done a lot of great work for the Burr Liner softball fields. The purpose of this organization is to support, foster, aid, and enhance the sports programs for the Columbus Recreation and Parks Department, and to assist their efforts by securing support from public and private resources. More recently, the BATS Board has changed their focus and operations with the help of the Sports Office, and they are continuing to make and contribute to the economic impact of $66 million to the city through Burr Liner. So with that, I move for adoption of this ordinance, sorry, this resolution.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Reel. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, everyone, for the honor of this resolution, which celebrates the partnership of BATS and the city of Columbus. Almost exactly 30 years ago, I stood before this group on behalf of our board and basically said, "Here's what we can do for you," asking rather than "What you can do for us." 30 years later, as a much older man, the results are evident at Burr Liner Park, at Tuttle, at Anheuser-Busch, things that we have been involved with all over the city, to make in particular Burr Liner Park a jewel of the city and certainly a showplace for Columbus and Midwest and national softball events. So we are very grateful for the cooperation we have had from the Columbus Recreation and Parks Department, Jack Castle, his predecessor, the late Gary Ogilvy, was also instrumental, and our good friend on the council back then, the late Charlie Mantle, were all instrumental in making it what it is today. So for that, we thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reel. Mr. Castle, would you like to make any comments? Any additional comments? Thank you.
I have one resolution tonight. I'd like to invite Roman Iqbal from the Council of American Islamic Relations to please come forward to the podium, and those in the audience who would like to share in this resolution to stand if you'd like. As I introduce Resolution 251-X-2016, to condemn religious intolerance and the rise of Islamophobia and declare support for the Muslim community in the city of Columbus. Before I read the resolution, I would like to point out how incredible it is to have the show of support from the community, to be here in such large numbers tonight. It really is inspiring to see, and I want to thank those that desired to make this resolution possible, along with all the support of my colleagues on Columbus City Council. Thank you to my friends from the Jewish Voice for Peace, who originally encouraged action for resolution at one of my community hours earlier this year, and also want to thank Director of our Neighborhood Department, Carla William Scott. My staff and I couldn't have pulled off this event and this show of support without you and your staff. As you know, you have a great team. And then thank you to all the mosques, churches, synagogues, temples, cultural centers that have shown their overwhelming support here today. We truly thank you all for being here. The city of Columbus is proud to be a racially, ethnically, and religiously diverse city. We're home to thousands of Muslims whose faith inspires them to give back every day and to contribute to our city as United States military personnel, police officers, doctors, nurses, caregivers, business owners, both large and small, teachers, and many other roles that are integral in the success of Columbus. The people of Columbus have a long history of opening their arms to all people, and the increasing prevalence of anti-Muslim rhetoric is adverse to both our community's belief system as well as our nation's founding principles of religious liberty. This year marks the 14th-hundredth anniversary of the Charter of Medina, a constitutional contract between the Prophet Muhammad and the people of Medina, which guaranteed religious liberty for all, regardless of faith. 2016 also marks the 225th anniversary of the First Amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America, which enshrined the principle of religious liberty into the jurisprudence of the country. I do not believe it's coincidence that this is a recurrence theme among some of the greatest civilizations in history. Here in Columbus, Muslims, like members of all religious backgrounds, should be treated with dignity, care, and compassion that every human being deserves, irrespective of faith. It should be our goal that all residents of the city ought to confront all forms of religious bigotry, vilification, and denigration, and stand with our sisters and brothers throughout the Muslim community. I feel it's safe to say, after seeing the support of the community tonight, that Columbus is well on its way to achieving that goal. And before I present this resolution, I'd like to offer the floor to my colleagues for any comments. President Klein?
Thank you, Councilmember Stenziano, and thank you for coming down and joining us as I look upon what I think, we have 200 people here, standing in solidarity with one another, with us at City Hall, which is your house. I just would like to say, as I mentioned earlier during the public forum at 4 o'clock, that as long as I'm council president, and I can, I think, safely speak for my colleagues as well, that we're not going to let the angry racist xenophobic talk, especially spewing from a very few number of people at the national level, stop us from being the loving, open, caring, and accepting community that we are. Or the community that we want to be, and that is a community where my two-year-old and four-year-old is playing on the playground and going to school with your two-year-old and four-year-old. So we're all in this together, and we stand united together. Thank you, Councilmember Stenziano.
Seeing no other comments from my colleagues, and I do want to thank them for participating in the roundtable we had beforehand, also Councilwoman Brown for your ongoing support. I know we signed on to a letter and had a lot of discussions with all members of how important this resolution is. I move for adoption.
Second? Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Mr. Iqbal? It's now with great pleasure that I present the resolution, and the podium is yours.
Mrs. Stenziano, may I get the permission to ask some of the members to stand behind me? I know not everybody can.
You have the podium, so as long as the president's comfortable with that, you may.
Please, may some of you guys come over and just stand. All right. On behalf of the Muslim community, I want to thank all the sponsors of this resolution, and we are very proud that each and every member of the city council has sponsored this resolution, and I want to thank each of them by name, Mr. Michael Stenziano, Ms. Elizabeth Brown, Mr. Mitchell Brown, Ms. Shannon Harden, Ms. Jaisa Page, Ms. Priscilla Tyson, and Ms. Zach Klein. I also want to thank Ms. Carla William Scott of the Department of Neighborhood and her team, and also all the city officials, NFA leaders, and members of our Muslim community and NFA community who are here with us today. This resolution condemns Islamophobia. Now, we all know what Islamophobia is. Islamophobia is irrational fear of Islam, and by extension, irrational fear of Muslims. But how does it manifest itself? Here's how it manifests itself. A 10-year-old boy goes to school and is asked by his teacher to draw a superhero. He draws a robot with wires coming out. That 10-year-old child is accused of making a bomb. Now, this child does not know what a bomb is. He's just 10 years old, just making a robot. Or a Muslim man who goes to a rental agency and wants to rent an apartment, and he's told, "We cannot rent to you because the neighbors may fear you and may fear that you are a terrorist, and that is going to be a problem because you're Muslim." Or a student at a technical college who wears a headscarf, and that student, the instructor for that student in front of the whole classroom says, "You know, I really enjoy to see people who wear headscarves like you getting killed." Now, these very, very sad and horrific incidents, these are not from the last decade or the last year. These are cases that have come to our office in October. This is just this year, and we have seen in the last one year that there has been an uptick in Islamophobia, in hate crimes against Muslims, and in cases of discrimination against Muslims in Ohio, in Columbus, and across America. Now, let's be honest, the last year has been very tough on American Muslims. We all have heard the things that have been said about Muslims in the media, especially in the political arena. The people who hate Muslims are loud. They're a minority, but they have loud microphones. But we know that the vast majority of people in Columbus, in Ohio, and in America do not agree with the things being said about Muslims by these people. Most of the people, the vast, vast majority of people in Columbus, they don't like the things being said about their Muslim coworkers, about their Muslim friends, and about their Muslim neighbors. But it's not simply enough to disagree and disapprove of these comments. Yes, that's a good first step, but in this climate, that is not enough, because if you are silent and you just disapprove of these comments in your heart, you will never drown out the voices of hate, which even though a minority are very loud. So this is why it is time to choose a side, and we are very proud that the City Council of Columbus has in fact chosen a side. The City Council of Columbus has chosen a side to stand with the Muslims against hatred. The City Council of Columbus, through this resolution, has taken the side of religious tolerance and acceptance, and it has stood against bigotry and fear, and not just against bigotry against Muslims, but bigotry against all communities. This resolution is also an acknowledgement of the fact that Muslims belong in Columbus, Muslims belong in America, and deserve the same right, respect, and dignity as any other community which lives in this town. So I want to end by thanking the council again on acknowledging that, yes, we have a problem with hate and bigotry against Muslims, by the council putting their marker down and saying, "No, we will not accept this in Columbus." Thank you. Thank you.
That is the only resolution they have tonight. President Klein?
Thank you, Councilmember Stenziano. President Protem Tyson?
Thank you, President Klein. I just have a few announcements. Before I make my announcement, I just want to again say congratulations to the four individuals who were inducted into Columbus Hall of Fame today. The first person that was inducted was Carl L. Brown, Sr., who is a very passionate individual about delivering fresh foods to our inner-city neighbors. His store was on Mount Vernon Avenue, and certainly he hired a lot of people from that community, and he made sure that we had fresh produce in that community. And sadly, we don't have a store on the Near East Side in that neighborhood right now. As you know, I am working on a food plan for the city of Columbus, and so just recognizing the food deserts in our community. So Carl L. Brown played a significant role in our community. Also, the other person was Don Isley, a man who reached for the stars and became a NASA astronaut, and he was from the Franklinton community. And then Lynn Greer, a woman who has led the charge of equal rights for the LGBTQ community. And last but not least, George Schmidt, a man who gave us culture through the launch of Oktoberfest, and which has this year celebrated its 50th anniversary. So again, congratulations to those four individuals who are now inducted into the Columbus Hall of Fame. I have a few. I also want to announce that, to congratulate Mr. Dorian, the administration, and also members of council on the recent AAA bond rating, which was received by all three credit ratings for the city of Columbus. This is great news for our city. It will help us to have better interest rates as we improve our services to our residents, and this bond sale will be up to $485,240,000. Also, my Finance Committee will be hosting a 2016 voted bond package hearing. This year, Columbus residents have an opportunity to approve a package of four bond issues designed to invest $950 million in neighborhood infrastructure, services, and quality life improvements. Representatives from the Department of Finance and Management and other city departments will be available to present and discuss these issues at a hearing that will be held this Thursday, October 27, at 5:30 PM in council chambers. We'll accept speaker's lips up until 5:30 time. Also, the City of Columbus Annual Action Plan for the program year 2017. This will be November 1. It will be chaired by Councilmember Jaisa Page, and Councilmembers Brown, Harden, and myself will be participating in that hearing. It's at 4:30 in council chambers, and we'll be looking at, again, the 2015 to 2019 Columbus Consolidated Plan. Also, that same day, I will be hosting, again, I'll be having my normal hearing at 3:30 on the 1st for Health, Finance, and Human Services for the legislation that will be coming up for the following two weeks. So we'll have two hearings that day, one that starts at 3:30, and the other one that will begin at 4:30 in council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, President Protem Tyson. I'd like to invite up, and I'll begin to read the ordinance number, but I'd like to invite up our members of the Division of Police, true public servants, Larry Geis and Scott Klinger. Please come to the podium. I have 255X-2016 to honor and recognize Columbus Division of Police Officer Scott Klinger and Larry Geis for receiving the United States Attorney General's Award for Distinguished Service in Community Policing. The Attorney General's Award for Distinguished Service in Community Policing recognizes individual, state, local, sworn personnel, sworn police officers or deputies for exceptional efforts in community policing. These officers have worked diligently to address residents' and business owners' concerns regarding a rash of criminal activity at several problem hotels and businesses in the city of Columbus. And Officers Klinger and Geis were instrumental in the adoption of a new city ordinance establishing the safety rules for hotels and motels, resulting in a significant decrease in crime and calls for service at these hotels and motels. On October 6, 2016, Attorney General Loretta Lynch recognized both of you and only a total of 12 officers from across the United States. So two of the 12 that were offered, that were recognized across the United States were the two standing before us. Heroes to the city of Columbus, wonderful public servants. I'd like to get a motion to adopt 255X-2016. I'd like to get a motion to adopt 255X-2016. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Officers Klinger and Geis, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. I would like to say that we represent a lot of people that made this work, including and mostly the citizens and businesses of Columbus. And there's just so many people behind the scenes, I'd take days to talk about it. Assistant City Attorney Bill Spurlaza plays a huge role in helping us. And having City Attorney Rick Pfeifer's support is big, too. But I think, and I can't forget, of course, Councilmember Page, who helped us get the start and built the ground for us to head that direction. But of course, yourself, President Klein, you put together a great coalition of people together to craft a new law that was fair and just and good. And I'd like to thank you.
Tough to beat on that, let's beat Scott out for that one. So I just want to say the same thing. I just want to say thank you for everybody's help that's been involved with all this from the beginning to now. When it boils down to it, our concerns and everything else still goes back to our citizens that we work for and the support that they give us all the time when we're out there on the streets, and we thank them all. Thank you.
Well, great work, and I appreciate the accolades you've given to council, the city attorney's office, to the Division of Police. But the reality is, it does start with the community, and it started with y'all, that you were able to identify the problems in the community and work with all the stakeholders to bring about change that has now effectuated for the better safety in our neighborhoods. And I think Attorney General Lynch's recognition of both of you, knowing that there were only 12 officers from across the United States, and two of them were with the Columbus Division of Police and the two standing before us, I think is an honor that is certainly one that's memorable, but one worth recognizing as well. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Councilmember Page?
Thank you, President Klein, and to Officers Klinger and Geis. I'd just like to congratulate you both, and thank you for the work that you're doing, you're both doing. You have been soldiers on the ground for like the past six or seven years, particularly as CLOs. I think you are exemplary CLOs. You have laid the groundwork, especially in the hotel motels, and you two are amazing, one of my two favorites. So thank you, and you deserve all the recognition that you continue to get.
Any other comments or questions for my colleagues? Councilmember Mitch Brown?
I would be remiss if I did not, as Scott just went to his face, to acknowledge that these two officers, who I've known for a very long period of time, have done just an exemplary job. They're emblematic of all the 1,900 police officers sworn in the city of Columbus who do a great job, and you guys are totally reflective of that. So Larry, I didn't say anything that I promised you I would, so I'm going to be very, very nice. But again, what you do every day, the way in which you communicate with the community is very, very well-recognized, and it passes on to everybody else. So thank you for the hard work, guys. It's appreciated.
President Protim Tyson?
Thank you, President Klein. I just want to also just not only thank you, but also just thank your family, who allow you to do this work each and every day. And I can just say, just like sitting here and just looking at you, how you guys are looking at each other, how you're smiling, and I mean, it just, you should just, you could see yourselves from up here, that you would be someone that, you know, you'd want to see in the community. I mean, you just look like you enjoy your jobs, you're having a good time, and so thank you for serving our community, and thank you for, you know, lots of, you hear lots of information about, you know, police officers around the country and even our own community. And for the two of you to stand here before us today, who have been recognized by Loretta Lynch, but also just seem like you just enjoy what you're doing, thank you so much for serving our community. And again, thank you to your families.
Thank you, President Protim Tyson. Any other comments? You guys have to split this. Just tear it down, tear it down, tear it down the center. Congratulations. It was great working with those guys, two great guys, two great public servants. Are there any comments by elected officials, members of the administration, Auditor Dorian, Treasurer's Office, City Attorney's Office? I don't see any representatives from the bench here, members of the administration, seeing none. Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive second reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Clerk Blevins, will you now read to the record the ordinance numbers of the 30-day legislation, 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee ordinance 2556-2016. Public Safety Committee ordinance 2524-2016. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance 2571-2016. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 2544, 2547, 2561, and 2567-2016. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 1472, 2358, 2449, and 2491-2016.
Thank you. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance number of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 256X-109X, 242X, 249X, 250X, 253X, 254X-2016. Finance Committee ordinance is 2143, 2236, 2308, 2405, 2409, 2482, 2520, 2521, 2528, and 2529-2016. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 2545, 2552-2016. Economic Development Committee ordinance 2574-2016. Environment Committee ordinance 2509-2016. Public Safety Committee ordinance is 2148, 2458, and 2484-2016. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 2436, 2522, 2525, and 2562-2016. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 2204, 2246, 2247, 2282, 2293, and 2393-2016. Housing Committee ordinance 2576-2016. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2048, 2072, 2085, 2118, 2317, 2376, 2390, 2392, 2424, 2429, 2433, 2487, 2494, and 2605-2016. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee ordinance 2483-2016, and appointments from the mayor's office numbered 80176, 177, and 181-2016.
We do not have any speaker slips on the consent action portion of the agenda, so may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown? Harden? Page?
Yes, with the exception of 2405-2016, on which I am abstaining.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Klein?
Yes, consent action carries with the notable exception. We'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table in emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. President Protim Tyson chairs that committee. President Protim, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. I have one ordinance in finance this evening. It is ordinance number 2496-2016. It's to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract for the option to purchase the Fleet Spreader parts with Buckeye Truck Equipment, Inc., to authorize expenditure of $2 to establish a contract from the general fund and to declare an emergency. This contract will be approximately $25,000, and the primary user will be the Fleet Management Department. We will, we're going to ask for, request to amend as submitted to the clerk, because this ordinance has two companies that will be getting the, will be providing the services to the city, Buckeye Truck Equipment and JT Dillard, LLC. And that's why we're asking to amend this. So first, I would ask to amend as submitted to clerk.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, and I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. I would now like to move to Health and Human Services. Thank you. I have ordinance number 2519-2016. It's to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health in the amount of $405,184.09 for the maternal and child health grant program, to authorize the appropriation of $405,184.09 from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's grants fund, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance will permit the maternal and child health funds will support tobacco sensation services and Columbus Public Health's women's health and family planning. It also will help to support a treatment specialist in the baby and me tobacco-free program. The goal in 2017 is to serve 55 clients. It also will provide funding for the, for two childcare centers to implement the Healthy Children, Healthy Wates program. We passed legislation even on that program, I think, last week. It also will allow Columbus Public Health to provide about 900 cribs to parents and provide infant safety education among community residents and organizations to at least six Safe Sleep Ambassador trainings. It will also focus on the fetal infant mortality review program, and that review program will study about 48 cases of children. And then lastly, the Columbus, Columbus, Ohio Equity Health Institute, which focuses on the South Side and ensuring that, that the women there receive the services they need to be able to have healthy babies. And so I would ask my colleagues to support this legislation. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, President Protim Tyson. The next committee is Economic Development, chaired by Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. First up tonight in economic development, we have ordinance 2501-2016 to authorize the Director of Development to enter into a dual-rate jobs growth incentive with Huckberry Incorporated for a term of three consecutive years in consideration of investing an estimated $100,000 and creating 158 new full-time permanent positions. I want to highlight that Huckberry is an e-commerce retailer headquartered in San Francisco. They are proposing to relocate a large portion of their warehousing and related business operations in the Rickenbacker area. Their investment in payroll represents an average wage of $15.90 an hour. And so I did want, before I move for passage, to ask the director to give us a little bit of comment on that wage and how it's related to other jobs in the region.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Klein, members of council. The wages for this job are above $15 an hour. In addition, when you look at wages in this industry within central Ohio, these, the wages for these jobs are above the average for logistics and distribution within our region. So we're excited about this project, excited to move forward, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Director. I want to thank your office for always keeping tabs on the data and being able to provide that background, so we have a good gauge of where these projects are landing relative to the industry. Are there any questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Second, in economic development, we have ordinance 2505-2016 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with HR and A advisors to perform an analysis of the city's current incentive offerings for residential office and industrial development, to authorize a transfer within and an expenditure of up to $150,000 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. This piece of legislation is in follow-up to an RFP that the Department of Development put out, and follows on some discussion that we had in this council meeting months ago around the steep population increase that is projected in Columbus over the next 35 years. I think really necessitates, and the department believes necessitates, it's a priority to invest tax dollars in a way that leverages smart and sustainable growth as we see that kind of population growth in our city, while also protecting public funds and generating the maximum benefit for our residents and neighborhoods. So I'm excited about the possibility of this study to give us information, to give us that hard data, to be able to make these analyses. So, Director, can you give us a sense of timeline for HR and A to bring back data?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Brown, President Klein, members of council. Our expectation is they'll be, they'll be fully wrapped up in five to six months. We expect to start getting data back from them about the middle of that period. We're already in discussions with them about providing them the data from our side that they need to do their analysis. We are very excited to get moving forward on this, and thank you again for your help in putting this together and your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Are there any other questions or comments?
Yes, thanks, Councilmember Brown. I just appreciate your work and Director Shoney's work on this, because certainly, we want to make sure that any of the incentive offerings that we are providing to our, you know, business, residential, et cetera, are certainly in line with what we should be doing. And so I appreciate, because of the financial impact it has upon our city, so I really do appreciate Chairperson Brown, that you're taking the leadership on this and ensuring that we get this information. Look forward to the results in about five to six months. Thank you.
Thank you, Protim. Any other? Great, seeing no more comment, I move for passage.
Second?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
President Klein, I have no more in economic development. May I move on to environment? In Environment Committee tonight, we have ordinance 2166-2016 to amend the 2016 capital improvements budget, to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation within the refuse bonds fund, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into contracts for the purchase of automated side loader refuse trucks with compressed natural gas from ESET Corporation and Stoops Freightliner, to establish funding for Division of Refuse Collection personnel to inspect the vehicles during the manufacturing, to authorize the expenditure of $5,360,000 within the refuse bonds fund, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance allows the city to purchase various trucks from various different contracts for a total of 16 trucks, and this purchase will use dollars from the 2015 and 2016 capital budgets. It allows us the opportunity to better understand new technologies that the market has to offer and compare them in real time. Ultimately, the division will select a single truck configuration that best meets its needs for its future purposes. Director Gallagher, is there any other information that you want to provide on this?
No, I have nothing else to add this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for my colleagues? I move for passage.
Second?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
That's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Next committee is Public Safety, chaired by Councilmember Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Ordinance number 2245-2016 to authorize the Director of Department of Public Safety to enter into a contract with Tyco Simplex Grinnell for $720,000 for the installation of the neighborhood safety camera systems in the city of Columbus neighborhoods, to authorize the expenditure of $20,000 from the Department of Public Safety's bond funds, and to declare an emergency. There are currently 300 neighborhood safety cameras located throughout the city. Phase two will increase that number to approximately 330. The location for cameras is a collaborative effort between the community, law enforcement, and crime statistical information. The $720,000 expenditure will includes the cost of ancillary components associated with the installation of the cameras. We have two community members here this evening that would like to speak here this evening that would like to speak regarding the neighborhood safety cameras. Would they please come down, Ms. Felicia Saunders and Louis Meyer? Would you please state your name and your address, please?
Good evening. My name is Felicia Saunders. My address is 2166 East Haven Drive.
I'm Lois Meyer. I'm with the Berwyn East Civic Association, and my address is 1393 Byron Avenue.
It's good to see everybody tonight. We're here to represent the MAC. The MAC is the Mideast Area Community Collaborative, where there's 14 block watch and civic associations on the east side of Columbus, and we come together and deal with issues in our community. Four years ago, I did a petition in the East Haven neighborhood for the safety cameras. Unfortunately, my son, Anthony "Fat Boy" Sowers, was murdered in my neighborhood. And it was a situation where a young man was hidden in the bushes. When my son pulled up in front of his best friend's house, he came out of the bushes, shot my son in the back, and had a getaway car, and sped off, and drove off the neighborhood. And the safety cameras would have been a great evidence to present in the courts because the young man had six men, said that he was with him at the time of the murder. And when I went to court one day, because there was someone who decided to come forth, because we had two key witnesses, and he decided to come forth and speak. And when I got down to the court system, I thought that the murder was going to take place, but the witnesses became unavailable because they found out this young man who had the gun charge, shot my son, had six gun charges prior to killing my son, so they was afraid to speak. And I don't think that my justice will play out in the courtroom, because when the Judge Michael Holbrook spoke to the young man when he came in the courtroom with a smile on his face, he said to him, "You seem like you're a fine young man," and that you should go through these five years after your seventh gun charge and get out and get involved in the community somewhere. So right now, I have no faith in the court system to know that justice is going to be given to my family on behalf of that. They said they had no other evidence besides the two people who were supposed to speak. I believe that if we had the safety cameras in our neighborhood at the time, they could have had footage to see that he was in the neighborhood that night when he killed my son, and that would have been enough evidence to maybe help the witness to come forth to speak. We have been working very hard on the east side of Columbus to fight our crime, and it seems like the east side has been plagued with crime. And now that they have released a lot of people out of jail right now, there's a lot of vendetta going on right now, because a lot of people are mad, and they're coming out, and it's like the Wild, Wild West on the east side of Columbus. We have issues with the corner stores. In my neighborhood is Court Right Market. We've asked the owner to sign a neighborhood agreement as well as the trespass agreement, but he refused to do it. And he allows gang activity in the store. He allows them to come in and duck their guns and drugs off when the police is called. And if he doesn't, you know, comply with the neighborhood, the police can't do their job. And we have a laundromat down there, where they were going down there and they were selling drugs out of the laundromat. They were having sex in the bathroom. And, you know, I'm the type of mother in my community, they call me Mama Fats, and I go in love, and I try to talk to the gang members and help them to stop doing what they're doing in my community. But we need help. You know, those safety cameras would be there to at least gather the evidence that we need to present it in court, and also hold these judges accountable for their actions. Thank you.
We're grateful that we just recently heard that four of our locations have been accepted and that we will be getting those. We'd like to know just how soon, and that there are some others that are being considered. We're holding our neighbor, we're not asking for a lot from the city. We're working hard within our communities to unite people and to work on things, but we just need a few things such as this to give us the backbone and, you know, to, to really make our neighborhoods safe. We don't want our neighborhood to go down so that then you have to do things to pull our neighborhood out. We want to maintain and get it better. And that's for all of the, particularly the MAC area, the Mideast Area Community Collaborative. And we can explain what that is if you need.
Ms. Saunders and Ms. Meyer, thank you for coming down. Ms. Saunders, again, as you know, we go back a long way, and against, again, our condolences for your loss. But as we continue to move forward with the implementation of cameras, again, we believe that it'll make a difference in the communities, to be able to provide the evidence that's necessary to put away the bad guys when they do things they're not supposed to. So if there are any questions for me and my colleagues, if I hear none, would ask for move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you for coming down, ladies.
Thank you.
Also, on tonight's agenda, we have ordinance 2648-2016 to authorize a contract between Columbus City Council and the Center of Innovation and Entrepreneurship at the Ohio State University for the purpose of developing the reentry entrepreneurship program, to authorize an appropriation and expenditure of $30,000 within the jobs growth subfund, and to declare an emergency. This is a companion piece of legislation for ordinance 25822016, which was passed last week by City Council. Columbus City Council will partner with the Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship in the development of reentry entrepreneurship program. The purpose is to provide current and previously incarcerated individuals with the information and education that they need to start the process of developing a small business. The program will focus on strategic plan development, entrepreneurship training, personal basic business finance, and leadership development. Participants will focus on issues such as business viability, mentorship, recruitment, and training. Former inmates face substantial obstacles in finding gainful employment, a significant and well-documented factor in recidivism. States that provide additional business education, training beyond remedial courses show a correlated decrease in the recidivism and in the increase in overall employment of those previously incarcerated. The program will be based upon other initiatives that have already been successfully implemented at other correctional facilities around the country. The intent is to develop an REP coordination with Franklin County Corrections Division so that the program's services can be provided to those currently incarcerated in Franklin County facilities. Mr. Paul Reader, the Executive Director of the Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship, is here this evening and would like to come down and make a few comments. Mr. Reader?
Yes, thank you, President Klein and Councilmember Brown for allowing me to come in and represent Ohio State University and our Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship. What I want you to do is imagine that you veer off course, and that off, that path takes you to Franklin County Jail. Then imagine that you've got a group of students, MBA students, undergraduate students from our Fisher College of Business, that come and invite you to create a program, not a program just to talk about entrepreneurship, but a program to give you hope to be able to go back to your community, to establish a business, to bring Councilmember Tyson, a new, fresh market to your neighborhood. Employee people, employ your friends, and redirect the path that you were taking, okay? This is all I want to be able to do. When we met with Deputy Chief Stobart, that was one of the things that stuck with me, is he said, "We just need to redirect." And we have a different student nowadays, a different student that doesn't come into the Fisher program to say, "I want to work for IBM. I want to work for Cardinal Health." Now, we'd like to give them those jobs, right? We have a different social message that's coming out of our program, and that is, we are a land-grant institute. And as our land-grant mission says, that we don't just move our graduates into high-paying jobs, but they are a member of society. And I think this is a spectacular program that personally I'm looking forward to be able to drive our students in these programs and mentor them as they mentor these inmates to change their life, and to change a path that they're on, and to create new businesses, create these economic development opportunities in the community they came from, and be an example to the other youth in that neighborhood that said, "You can't just continue to do crimes like we just heard." Very emotional step. We have to change that path. And I, and I absolutely believe that providing that hope and our guidance to say, "You can start a business. You can make a difference," that is a big step I want to be able to take. So thank you for allowing me to talk.
Council President Pro Tim.
Chairman Brown, I am just, I am so excited about this program, and because we realize that there are so many people in this community that have, are in prison, and also those have gotten out of prison that still aren't able to move forward because of their past. And so for, and I recognize the fact that many of these individuals have skill and talents that should be to help make our community, you know, a better place. And unfortunately, if you have a background, it's very, very difficult to move forward. This program will give individuals an opportunity to, to be able to reach their full potential. It allows people to think outside the box, which is what's needed right now, to solve these issues. I think it plays well with the work that Councilmember Harden is chairing with my brother's keeper. It focuses on the work that Councilmember Page just last week's, last Friday, your program that you're kicking off in terms of skills and talents that individuals have to be able to remodel homes, et cetera. I think that, I'm just so excited about it because we need to make sure that everyone that comes back to this community that has, have skills and talents, have an opportunity to be able to utilize those to help them, their families to grow and prosper, and our community to grow and prosper. So I'm excited, Chairman Brown, for the work that you're doing. Councilman President Klein, you've been working with this project with Chairman Brown, and look forward to the students that you work with, Mr. Reader, to help us to move our community forward and change lives. That's what this is really about, changing lives. So thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Brown. Thank you, President Klein.
Councilmember Harden?
Thank you, Chair Brown. And I just want to reiterate what President Pro Tim Tyson said. Your leadership on this is so appreciated. You have talked about this issue of reentry and giving second chances so many times, and this program is just another example of the city of Columbus stepping up and really being an example, and the partnership with OSU, and being an example to the private sector to say that in this community, we believe in second chances. It's the cruelest of jokes to have a person serve their time, tell them they need to come back to the community and get a job, and then have no jobs available for them. Through the work of Restoration Academy, which Councilmember President Pro Tim Tyson and others worked on, in this program, in the leadership of former Mayor Coleman, we are moving in that direction, but we are just setting examples. We really have to lean on, lean in with, with our, our private sector partners, other public sector partners as well, to step up and, and let's, let's, we need to, we need to move past this. And I'm so appreciative of Councilmember Brown, President Klein, for your leadership. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think what's significant here is that it's important to point out the center will use the funds to develop a curriculum to deliver in short-term incarcerated facilities. That's very, very important for everybody to understand, and that we're doing this because of a demonstrated link between education, entrepreneurship, and reduced recidivism. We heard a young lady just talk a few moments ago about what happened to her son, and the realization that people were going to be getting out of prison. These are the folks we want to try and offer an additional opportunity to. And with the collaboration with the Ohio State University, at least it's an additional step to try and adjust those concerns. So if there are no further questions for my colleagues, Council President? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, and thank you, Mr. Reader, and the Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship at the Ohio State University. It's just, for far too long, as our society, we focused solely on conviction rates. And make no mistake about it, conviction rates should be a focus because violent people deserve to go to jail for a very long time. But if we really want to make our community safer, we need to focus on conviction rates and recidivism rates. And one way to give individuals reentering society the opportunity for economic upward mobility as it relates to driving down recidivism rates is to give them the training that we're talking about today. And it is that link between education, entrepreneurship, and reduced recidivism that a program like this will allow reentering individuals the opportunity to provide for themselves and their family. I think it's important, I want to highlight just a couple of statistics that I think underline this investment. Unemployed former inmates are three to five times more likely to commit another crime than an employed former inmate. For every dollar invested in a prison education program, it ultimately saves $4 to $5 in reincarceration costs. And in Texas, former inmates who completed prison-based entrepreneurship programs, like the one that we're going to be doing with you and the Ohio State University, Mr. Reader, the recidivism rate was 10%, which was half of what the recidivism rate was for other individuals not receiving this training. So this is, in my opinion, not a social service enterprise. This is true criminal justice and effective law enforcement, and we're proud to be part of this program. Thank you, Councilmember Brown.
Council President, thank you. Mr. Reader, thank you. If I hear no additional questions, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Council President, that's all we have in public safety. Thank you.
Our next committee is Public Service and Transportation. It's chaired by Councilmember Harden. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening in Public Service and Transportation, we have ordinance 2432-2016 to amend the 2016 capital improvement budget, to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation between project within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, and to authorize the city attorney's office to contract for professional services relative to the acquisition of fee simple title and lesser interest in and to property needed for the roadway improvement Warner Road. This Hamilton Road to Harlem Road project, and to authorize the city attorney's office to negotiate with property owners to acquire the additional rights of ways necessary to complete this project, and to authorize, authorize the expenditure of $60,000 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. Ordinance 2432 designates $60,000 to acquire the right-of-way needing to widen Warner Road from Hamilton to Harlem, ensuring a 20-foot throughout improvement of drainage along the Warner Road. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Next, I have 2474-2016 to amend the 2016 capital improvement budget, to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract modification with Essela Inc., relative acquisition, relative to the acquisition and reconfiguration of Essela Propriety Software, to authorize the expenditure of up to $123,665.09 and $0.06 to pay this project and to declare an emergency. This is an expansion to an existing contract with Essela. The previous contract was for $458,000 to do software update. This is important, and I think will be a really good asset to our residents, as it will help digitize some of our services along, around our fees and processing, helping cut back on paper, and make, just moving us forward as a community, and making it easier for folks to assess city processes. And so if there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Next, I have 2480-2016 to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fee simple and lesser real estate necessary to timely complete their Poindexter Village Roadways Phase Two public improvement project, and authorize the city attorney to spend funds from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, authorize the city attorney to spend funds from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund pursuant to an existing auditor certificate, and to declare an emergency. As the title states, this acquires land around Poindexter Village Project. The city attorney's office served these property owners notices, and are, and we are compensating them for the land that we are acquiring. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2560-2016 to authorize the city attorney's office Real Estate Division to contract for professional services relative to the acquisition of fee simple title and lesser interest in lesser interest in and to property needed for the pedestrian safety improvements Wagner Road Shared Youth Pass Project, to authorize the city attorney's office real estate division to negotiate with property owners to acquire the additional rights of ways necessary to complete this project and to authorize the expenditure of $125,000 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. This is another right-of-way acquisition along Wagner from Broad Street to Chapelstone Road. It's on the far east side of our city. The initial funding for this acquisition was $225,000. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
My last piece of, last ordinance in Public Service and Transportation is a project or a piece of legislation that I'm extremely proud of, had the opportunity to work with Councilmember Stenziano in shaping this. I'll first read the title and talk a little bit more about it. Ordinance 2584-2016 is to authorize the Director of Public Service to make grant payments under the Sidewalk Repair Grant Program, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $550,000 within the Streets and Highways Improvement Bond Fund for this purpose and to declare an emergency. This project came out of working with the Brittany Hills Community, Mr. Looper, where folks, through our regular process of improving sidewalks, was, folks were cited for sidewalk repair. We wanted to make sure in working with those residents that folks who are homeowners but still struggling financially aren't given, cited with a fee or a penalty to repair their sidewalks. And so this program will help with that, with solving that issue. And so this legislation establishes $550,000 fund for a sidewalk grant. As we all know, in Columbus, maintenance of sidewalks is the property owner's responsibility. If a resident receives a notice of violation saying their sidewalks are in a state of disrepair and qualifies for this grant, $1,500 will be given to cover the cost of the repairs. We came up with $1,500 because that is the median cost that we found for these repairs. Two folk, two groups of folks are, will primarily qualify for this grant. First, a single-family homeowner, family owner occupied homes, and secondly, businesses within neighborhood revitalization districts. There are income requirements for the grant to make sure that this money is going to folks in Columbus that actually need it. Eighty percent of the area median income for homeowners and for business owners, combined income and net worth cannot exceed $750,000. The goal of this money is to help improve sidewalks in Columbus while not putting an undue burden on the middle to lower-income residents of our city. Again, I appreciate my council support. I want to see if Councilmember Stenziano has any question. Does anybody have any question or comment? President Pro Tim Tyson?
Thank you Chairman Harden. This is a, I think, it's a wonderful program for our community. We definitely have individuals here who, if you're thinking about how neighborhoods continue to, how neighborhoods, we want to continue to improve our neighborhoods. And oftentimes, individuals who are still living in our communities are just having enough money just to be able to just, to take care of just the operational cost of running their home. They don't have the dollars to be able to do like the capital things, you want to think about that, putting roofs on their houses, fixing their sidewalks, things of that nature. And so this is an opportunity for the individuals who we want to remain in those communities, continue to help those homeowners, and this is a great opportunity to be able to do that. Also, for those individuals that are property owners that have, in those particular areas that again, may not be, you know, charging market rate rents on their properties and are working with, or letting, are people who are living in their, in their buildings that are, that need, that seek affordable housing, and they're helping to provide that service to our community, this will also help them. So it's just great work between you and Councilmember Harden, Councilmember Stenziano. Thank you.
Thank you President Pro Tim. This program is only successful if people utilize it. So we want to run this balance down to zero. And so if you want to find out more information for how you can participate, you can go to If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you so much President Klein and council. May I move to small and minority business? President Klein? Oh, you're so kind. Next I have, in Small and Minority Business Committee, I have ordinance 2240-2016 to authorize the appropriation of $268,888.01 from the Urban Site Acquisition Fund, and to authorize the Director of Department of Development to modify the contract with Finance Fund to continue the provision of administrative services in support of this, to the city's small business loan fund, and to authorize expenditure of $268,888.01 from the Urban Site Acquisition Loan Fund and to declare an emergency. This is extending the contract of the Finance Fund from, to February 28, 2017, to allow the Finance Fund to spend the contract balance of $112,644.09, as well as add an additional $268,888.01 from the Urban Site Acquisition Loan. Finance Fund and its affiliates have enabled low-income people to access a nearly 26,000 job, have access to nearly 26,000 direct jobs, over 16,000 units of affordable housing, created over 3,000 early care and education classrooms for 72,000 children benefiting the lives of over 190,000 Ohioans. The Small Business Loan Fund specifically works with for-profit businesses and community-based nonprofit organizations operating in underserved markets who might have inadequate credit. I certainly want to thank the Finance Fund for joining our public hearing last week and joining the other 40, almost 40 small business owners who participated. Director Shoney, do you have any additional comments?
Thank you Councilmember Harden, President Klein. This is part of our continuing portfolio of small business loans, and I guess the only other thing I would add is this goes back to when the council president was our committee chair for development and really helped lead us in the partnership to develop our programs with Finance Fund.
Thank you Director. Any additional questions or comments? If not, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you so much.
Thank you Councilmember Harden. The next committee is Recomb Parks, chaired by Councilmember Page. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you President Klein. In Recreation and Parks, we have ordinance 2259-2016 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract with Environmental Remediation Contractor, LLC, for the restoration of Dry Run Stream, to authorize the expenditure of $1,325,012 from the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund 2283 and Voted Bond Fund 7702, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of City Code Chapter 329 and to declare an emergency. This project will completely daylight the segment of Dry Run using natural channel stream restoration. Daylighting a waterway means to bring completely above ground or to the surface as opposed to being channeled through a pipe or otherwise. Dry Run is one of the most heavily impacted streams in Columbus, and the result will provide a fully functional floodplain, stream channel, and habitat recovery zone. The project will also provide a significant educational opportunity for our youth and expand recreation for the hilltop neighborhood. If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
President Klein, if I may move to the Housing Committee? Thank you. We have ordinance 2563-2016 to authorize the city clerk to certify a report to the county auditor to assess certain properties for the cost of demolishing structures that were found to be public nuisances. And the purpose of this ordinance is to allow the city to recover the cost that we expend to, again, demolish any structures that were ordered to be a public nuisance to the Franklin County Environmental Court. And we do have one person here speaking against this ordinance, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. If you could come down to the podium, please state your name, any organization you're representing, your address, and you have three minutes to speak.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, the chairman of vacant property in North Linden area. I'm just really kind of composed to all this is because I know, this has been multiple times, I had talked about vacant property days and decades. You know, there's other investors that live in our community that really wants to invest in these properties. You know, I call them diamond in the rough properties. And, you know, given somebody that and your opportunity, there's people that live in these communities that know the scope of these properties, North, South Linden, whatever make the case may be, and Central Ohio area. It's given those people an opportunity to renovate, to rehab those homes. I want to sit here and talk to you. There's other people like Mel McKendies and I, you know. We see something in these properties that can be turned around. Now, I understand that properties can be a nuisance as far as burnt properties, but other properties has not been burnt, you know. Those need to be given to investors that's living in our community. You know, it gives people opportunities and chance to really do something constructive with their life and hands. This is what I see. But unfortunately, I am against this. And, you know, seeing age-old property to being torn down can be beautified again, you know. Given those people annual time to really look at the property, what the property desire that it needs. If it doesn't need a lot of work, it may need some minor repairs, some type of work. But again, you know, I'm just against this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your comments, Mr. Wilkins, and I appreciate your advocacy for all of the neighborhoods. And I would encourage anyone who is interested in finding that diamond in the rough in that house that needs to be rehabilitated, to learn more about our city land bank, where you have that opportunity to purchase a home for a very inexpensive cost and then have the ability to rehab it. And Director Shoney, do you have anything to add?
Thank you Madam Chair, President Klein, members of council. To this specific legislation, this legislation is simply to add assessments on to properties that have already been demolished so that we can try and collect the money from those derelict property owners. So I just wanted to have that clarification.
Thank you Director. Are there any questions or comments?
Director, what means will be used to try and get these, the folks who owe money to the city? How are you going to go about doing that?
Thank you Councilmember Brown, President Klein, members of council. This goes on their tax bill, so it becomes part of the tax collection process.
Okay.
Thank you. If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. And President Klein, if I may now move to Rules and Reference Committee? Thank you. I have ordinance 3160-2015 to amend Section 91302 of the Columbus City Code to provide for the establishment of a fee policy by the Columbus Recreation and Parks Commission. And I would like to ask Director Collins to speak briefly on just that change.
Councilmember Page, President Klein, members of council, thank you. This is a needed ordinance. We talked about this with the Recreation Commission earlier this year. We're very interested in setting a policy in which our fee schedules are set throughout the system. Each session that we offer, we offer almost over 1,000 programs with different rates for each program. This policy sets the background behind what, how rates are structured so that we don't have to take each individual rate to our commission. It allows us to be more business-minded, more nimble, and more attuned to our customer.
Thank you Director. If there are no questions or comments for the Director, I would like to move for passage.
Are you moving passage on the amendment?
Yes. I would first like to request to amend, as submitted to the clerk.
Clerk, call the roll on the amendment.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Amended.
I now move for passage as amended.
Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed.
Thank you President Klein.
Thank you Councilmember Page. The next committee is Utilities, Public Utilities chaired by Councilmember Stenziano. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you President Klein. Tonight in Public Utilities, I bring forward ordinance 2122-2016 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Face Meyer Company for the Blueprint Clintonville Cook Glenmont Area Green Infrastructure Project, to authorize the appropriation expenditure of $1,346,593.54 from the Ohio EPA Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, and to amend the 2016 capital improvements budget for the division of Sewage and Drainage. This legislation authorizes the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract for the Blueprint Clintonville Infrastructure Project. The work consists of constructing three regional bioretention basins, seven curb extension bioretention cells, and several rain gardens in Clintonville. I know I've said it before, but I will continue to encourage residents to learn more about what Project Blueprint is and its goals for Columbus and our neighborhoods by going to www.columbus.gov backslash blueprint. If there are no questions or comments, I move for pass.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next I bring ordinance 2527-2016 to authorize the city attorney to spend city funds to acquire and accept in good faith certain fee simple title and lesser real estate located at 2274 Woodward Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, 43219, and contract for associated professional services in order for the Department of Public Utilities to timely complete the Woodward Avenue Storm Sewer Public Improvement Project and declare an emergency. This public project will improve certain storm sewer infrastructure in the vicinity of Woodward Avenue, and the city must acquire this real estate in order for the project's completion. The city attorney's office real estate division reviewed the real estate and determined the cost. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
That's all we have in Utilities. If I can move Technology? Tonight in Technology, bring forward ordinance 2478-2016 to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology to enter into a contract with Gudinkoff Corporation for the installation of fiber optic cable and related services, to authorize the Director of Technology to reimburse the Information Services Operating Fund for capital-eligible Department of Technology personal expenses incurred, to authorize the expenditure of $1,282,612.98 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Capital Improvements Bond Fund and declare an emergency. With this ordinance, we are working with the corporation for the installation of fiber optic cable at seven locations across the city of Columbus. This will provide fiber access to city facilities in areas not currently interconnected and provide additional fiber pathways for our fiber marketing initiative. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed. And that's all we have in the committees. Thank you.
Thank you Councilmember Stenziano. Just a reminder, is there any other business to come before council before we adjourn, and then we'll take a quick break and go to zoning? Just a reminder, there'll be no council meeting on October 31st. The next council meeting will be November 7th. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Okay, we stand adjourned. We're going to take a very quick break, and when the zoning chair's ready, we'll go here in about one minute or two minutes. Thanks. And we do have a non agenda item speaker that will take after zoning. Regular meeting number 53 will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Is there a second? Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
How about first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
We'll now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. All members serve on the committee. Councilmember- Councilmember Page.
Thank you, President Klein. Before beginning our zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speakers before council on zoning and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. Thank you. Our first variances evening is 2564-2016. To grant a variance from the provisions of sections 333302, AR12, ARLD, and AR1 apartment residential district use, 331249C, minimum numbers of parking spaces required, 333309 area requirements, 333316 fronting, 333322 maximum side yard required, section 333323A minimum side yard permitted, and 333324 rear yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1311 Summer Street, 43201, to permit a general office building in a single-unit dwelling carriage house or two single-unit dwellings to be developed on one parcel with reduced development standards in the AR1 apartment residential district. The applicant are Lauren and Sheldon Johnson. The proposed use is an office building in a single-unit dwelling on the same parcel. The city department's recommendation is approval, university area commission recommended approval. I would now like to ask for a staff presentation.
Good evening. The site is zoned AR1 apartment residential district and is currently undeveloped. The applicant proposes a general office building and a carriage house dwelling on the same parcel with the future option of converting the office building into a second dwelling unit. The proposal includes variances for reduced required parking spaces, minimum lot width, fronting on a public street, maximum and minimum side yards, and rear yard for the carriage house. A council variance is necessary because the AR1 apartment residential district does not permit office uses or the proposed arrangement of single-unit dwellings. The site is located within the planning area of the university district plan, which recommends medium-intensity residential uses at this location. Staff finds that this proposal is consistent with the plan's recommendation because the proposed office building will be designed to appear as a dwelling unit and will potentially be converted into a dwelling unit in the future. The request is consistent with the recent redevelopment pattern in historic urban neighborhoods, particularly with smaller infill projects. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? CNN, I would like to move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Our next variance is 2573-2016, and I would like to move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
We now have 2578-2016 to rezone 5980 North Hamilton Road, 43081, being 26.2 acres located at the southeast corner of North Hamilton Road and State Route 161 from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Hamilton Crossing LLC, care of Charlie Frost agent. The proposed use is a commercial development. The city department's recommendation is approval, Northland Community Council recommended approval. And I'd like to ask for a staff presentation.
The site is currently undeveloped and zoned in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant proposes the CPD Commercial Plan Development District to revise the current development text for site density setback and height requirements in order to provide a uniform development that is consistent with nearby properties that were recently rezoned. The development text allows uses permitted in the C4 commercial district with several restrictions. The text includes provisions for height limits, no build zones, setback requirements, and development standards that provide compatibility with adjacent properties. Variants is for reduced setbacks to allow parking lots to be divided by parcel lines and for increased light pole height are included in the request. The site is located within the boundaries of the Northland Plan Volume 2, which recommends mixed-use development for this location. The permitted uses of the CPD district are consistent with this recommendation, and the provisions of the CPD text will ensure that future development is compatible with adjacent properties. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Is the applicant Hamilton Crossing LLC or the agent Charlie Frost here? Would you like to make any comments? Thank you. I would now like to move for a passage of 2578-2016.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. We have a companion piece, 2579-2016, to rezone 5970 North Hamilton Road, 43081, being 42.06 acres located at the northeast and southeast corners of North Hamilton Road and East Dublin Granville Road from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Hamilton Crossing LLC, care of Charlie Frost agent. The proposed use is a commercial development. The city department's recommendation is approval, Northland Community Council recommended approval. Are there any additional comments you would like to add?
I'd just like to add that this application is almost the exact same application as what we just talked about. The only reason why they were separate applications was because the different subareas were not contiguous to each other, so they were separated into two applications.
Thank you. It's fine. Are there any questions? I would first move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
I now move for passage as amended.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
To rezone 4660 Kenny Road, 43235, being 1.9 acres located on the east side of Kenny Road, 377 feet north of Go-Down Road from M1 Manufacturing and CPD Commercial Plan Development Districts to LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant has preferred real estate investments to LLC care of Jill as Tangman Attorney. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval, Northwest Civic Association recommended approval. I would again like to ask for a staff presentation. I know we had one briefly last week as well.
The site consists of a 1.9 acre parcel currently developed with an office industrial building zoned in the M1 manufacturing with the access point being zoned in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is requesting to rezone the parcel to the LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential District to allow a 60-unit apartment development with a gross density of 31.58 units per acre. Staff is supportive of the request, given the existing mix of residential, commercial, and industrial uses adjacent to the site, the compatibility with the multi-unit residential development to the immediate north, and the applicant's commitment in the limitation text and site plan. There is a companion piece to this that varies height, density, and building lines and perimeter yard that we'll be discussing next, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Pine? I do believe that the applicant and his attorney is here. Jill Tang, if you can come down, you will have three minutes. If you could state who you're representing, and thank you.
Good evening, members of council, President Klein. Thank you for your time this evening. I apologize I was unable to be here last week, and I think there were several questions that arose regarding this particular zoning. I think it'd be helpful just to answer a couple of them, the most important being that the subject site is currently in industrial use. There is an industrial warehouse that is leased out on the site. My client's preferred real estate do own the property to the immediate north, which is an existing multifamily apartment project. They are buying the subject site for future expansion, and by future, I mean several years in the future. We are purchasing the property subject to an existing lease that doesn't expire for 10 years. So this is not an immediate use of that property. Of course, I can never tell you exactly what happens, but we are not planning to develop this for some time. So I think concern about any immediate disclosures or anything like that are not necessary. We are not even going to put a shovel in the ground for several years. The other thing I'd like to mention is that Mr. Ayers was at both the Northwest Civic Association meeting and Development Commission meeting. He did have an opportunity to express his concerns about his existing industrial use to the south. The property to the south is zoned for manufacturing uses. So long as he's operating legally, there shouldn't really be any issue. We agreed to impose a fence and landscaping to address any kind of noise visibility concerns that he might have, and both the Civic Association and the Development Commission felt that was sufficient to address Mr. Ayers' concerns. There are a number of existing residential properties already in the area across the street, obviously to the north where we own a property. If there are things that Mr. Ayers is doing that are not within his zoning district, that's certainly a different issue, but there certainly is nothing that prohibits residential properties from being next to manufacturing uses. And finally, you know, we of course want to be good neighbors, and certainly the door is open for us to have conversations with Mr. Ayers if there are ever any problems, but we are so far ahead of what we intend to do with this property that I think, you know, being concerned about lease agreements and things like that are premature. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Councilmember Brown?
The questions were along the lines that if the, you know, we say later on down the road, and this council could change, how are we going to be sure that individuals who are there from an industrial standpoint aren't going to be put in a very, very difficult position about the compatibility with residents?
Well, in my opinion, it's based on your zoning code. The zoning code does not prohibit there being residential uses next to a manufacturing district. So as long as, now you do have sections of your code in M2 that do prohibit residential properties within so many feet of manufacturing districts, but as long as that property is being used as it's zoned today for a manufacturing use, then we're allowed to be there and he's allowed to be there. So I think that your code has appropriately addressed any type of manufacturing use that would have such objectionable uses that a residential property should not be next to it.
And that's fine. It's just a question of whether or not the residents start presenting complaints. How would that be addressed with regards to? I had the benefit of going out and taking a look at this particular establishment, and the paint fumes or whatever that they may be doing could pose problems for some of the residents.
Well, there are already residential properties in the area. There's in fact a carryout on this property today that has, serves food and alcohol. So I mean, if there were, if there were, you know, paint fume issues, again, as long as he is operating legally, I don't think that there's any reason for us to provide any disclosure. It's zoned for manufacturing uses. It's clearly a manufacturing use as it is today. Whether he's there when we have residents there in several years in the future, I don't know, but obviously it's zoned for manufacturing use, so any manufacturing use can go into that site. So I mean, just for us to disclose that, well, first off, we're not planning on having residents in that property anytime in the immediate future, but assuming he's still there five, 10 years in the future, you know, to say, well, we have to disclose that there's a paint business next door, I think that's not appropriate.
As long as there's compatibility, then I'm perfectly okay with it.
I think your zoning code addresses that. I'm sure Ms. Pine can address it better than I can.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harden?
Thank you for coming back down. I just wanted to, because you stated that you wanted to be a good neighbor, which I 100% agree and believe that that's an intent. I appreciated his comments last week because they weren't coming from a malicious place. I think he was really concerned about the effect that his work will have on potential renters or folks that come to the property. And so, you know, I would just encourage you to continue to work with, in conversation. And so I personally don't think it was outside of the realm of what's acceptable to ask for you guys to talk to neighbors as our folks who potentially will come into that property, because sometimes folks don't think about some of the surroundings. They go where they can afford, and if there are adverse effects to, you know, breathing and paint through windows, I think it is worth the being upfront about it. And so just appreciating you come back down and answering the questions.
And we'll certainly be upfront to the extent, again, that we're five years, 10 years in the future, that, you know, that there's a continued paint business, but I'm trusting in the city of Columbus zoning code that his use is permitted in that district. I think your code separates out uses like those that might be damaging to a residential property, and the way that this is currently zoned is not one of them. So if, you know, if he's in an inappropriate zoning district, that's, might be a different issue, but assuming he's operating legally within his zoning district, your code identifies these uses as compatible.
Councilmember Elizabeth Brown?
I actually have a question for Ms. Pine, a follow-on. Can you just sort of speak to that? Do you feel confident in the delineation represented in this case between this manufacturing use and how it's represented in code?
The M1 zoning district that is to the south does allow both less and more objectionable industrial uses, but whenever there is a more objectionable use that's proposed within 600 feet of a residentially zoned property, they would have to seek a variance from the Board of Zoning Adjustment to be able to establish that use.
The residents would have to, or the manufacturer?
No, the business, the more objectionable use, whoever was proposing that use would have to get the variance. But there are, within 600 feet now, there's residential zoning districts. Right across the railroad tracks to the east, there's residential zoning. The new LAR1 district to the north was recently established, and then there's also some residential zoning across Kenny Road to the west. So right now, today, there's already residential zoning in place that would prevent more objectionable uses being able to establish on this property without getting that variance from the Board of Zoning Adjustment. So in my opinion, this new LAR1 district is not going to infringe upon the rights of this current M1 district.
Thank you, Ms. Pine.
Are there any further questions for Attorney Tangman?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Ms. Pine. If there are no further questions, I would first like to move to take this variance from the table.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
And I now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. And then the companion piece, 2444-2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of sections 333302, AR12, ARLD, and AR1 apartment residential district use, and 333325 perimeter yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 4660 Kenny Road, 43235, to permit commercial vehicular access and reduce perimeter yard in the LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant has preferred real estate investments to LLC care of Jill as Tangman Attorney. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval, Northwest Civic Association recommended approval. Are there any additional comments from staff? Any additional comments from the applicant? I would first like to move to take this variance from the table.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, and I now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. That's all we have in zoning this evening.
Thank you, Chair Page. Any other business to come before the zoning committee? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn? Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
We stand adjourned. We do have one non-agenda speaker we'll take very shortly.